All right, well, good evening. Just kind of to give you, as you know, one of the requirements of the state of Michigan is a law to adopt the balanced budget by July 1st. So what I've got here is just the timeline we've been on, a very simple timeline for you, but the board workshop begins back in April where we went through some of the general ideas for the budget and where we thought we might be going with the state and with our own local. And then where we're at tonight is the proposed 1718 budget, which I'm about to show you to the board and the public hearing that you will hold right afterwards. And then you will come back, as it says up here, to take board action on the 26th. You'll adopt the 1718 budget, then you'll also approve the final 1617 budget adjustment, which will vary again when they do the audit. But as you know, we have to start one budget before the other one's finished, and so there's a lot of estimations as you go there, especially for a district our size. There's a lot of money still out there, and while we work on it, we still get people that will say they're going to spend something that they don't quite spend, which is a good thing, but so the numbers come in. So that's kind of where we're heading. Always like to remind everybody that unlike budgets, when people think of them at home or in a business, it's not advisory when you're talking about a public school budget. It is really just an accounting about the source and how we're using public funds. And so that's why we do adjustments to match what's going on as we go through. So it gives us some guidelines, absolutely, but it's a public entity. We're really showing the public how we use the money that's given to us from various sources. One of the most important things that we do in this budget meeting, in the first budget, is we talk about the millage rates, and we establish those. And you know later in our board pack that we have to establish those with the city of Midland because they issue a summer tax, and they need to know how much to issue there. Pretty standard millage rates here. The first one is 18 mills on the non-homeside. That's the standard one voted, voted two or three years ago. Now it's good for 10 years. It's the most that you can levy. It's basically what every district in the state does on non-homeside. The second one is the hold harmless millage. It's calculated every year. So this year it works out to be 1.7100. It's up slightly, about .0286 actually to be exactly on. The way that's calculated is way back when, when they first gave us as a hold harmless district, they established the amount of money that you could raise per student. It's $415.31. Back then it took five mills, actually more than five mills, to raise that amount of money. So over time, you can never raise any more. So depending on where the taxable value is and how many students we have, that's going to change this millage year after year after year. Well, since neither of those are exact sciences when we're setting it right now, they also allow the following year for you to adjust it. If you levy too high one year, you've got to take it down the next. If you didn't levy enough, you take it up. Typically, that's what happens. In this case, maybe we had a few more students than we thought. The other thing that we're starting to notice is we're getting bigger adjustments because the other part that's in there is the personal property tax exemption. You lose that. Now, it's made up through the state, but you have to put that into your calculations of where the millage rate should go. I wish I could tell you that's a simple process, but you've got to get all that information from the county, and then on top of it, especially in a district like Midland, we have to go back and they have to subtract out Renaissance Zones, IFTs. Oh, we offer a lot of things out there that, as far as the district, even at the county level, it's really tough to figure out in time for this meeting. So what you can do is, they give you the number, you know how much personal property tax that you're losing, and we put that in there. But then the following year, we're going to have to adjust for those things that came in and out. So we're seeing slightly bigger adjustments as we go. Doesn't affect anything. We're following the rules. It's just, we're just seeing bigger adjustments either way because of the personal property tax. The other part is for our bond. And if you remember when we started, and I'll get this one, 2.92 was the very first one. Last year was 288, and now we're down to 272. We arrive at that by sending all our information in to our bond advisor, financial advisor, which is now with PFM. It used to be started by our state people. We talked to executive people, just different company, and they look at all our taxable value, where it's going, et cetera, and send it in. The reason it's going down, a lot of people think it's in terms of taxable value going up. In actuality, it's taxable value, and when they first start, they project the bond out over time. Really, they knew personal property tax was coming out of our taxable value back in 2015, and they just predicted it would drop our taxable value by bigger increments when they first started. So I think the first year, they thought we were going to drop by 13% taxable value, and the county only dropped by eight. And so this, I think last year they were predicting four for this year, and it's down by one. So yeah, it does mean some of the real property is going up a little bit, but it just means that it's hard to predict a bond out 15, 20, 25 years. And so we send it every year, right in mid-May, and goes back pretty quickly, and they tell us what we should be levying to do that. We don't want to over levy. Want to get in that situation, of course you don't want to under levy. That's where we stand today. State funding is interesting this year because unlike the previous years that I've done this, the state aid budget is not settled. Some years it's not quite been settled, but we knew where they were going. The proposed closure of the MIPSers retirement system to new teachers, if you've read anything about that, appeared to be, I'm going to say appeared to be, stumbling block between the governor and legislature. Actually, within, and I mentioned the last part there, in the last five days, it appears both the budget and MIPSers ideas coming to compromise someplace. So literally, while they worked on the compromise for the retirement system, which is, in essence, right now, there's a pension system, there's a hybrid pension system for any new teacher since 2010, where it's partially a pension and it's partially a investment, like in a 403B or 401K, et cetera. What the legislature's proposing on one side is that everybody gets closed out, you go to 401K plans, that's all you get. The governor's not so sure that which should go, kind of believes in the hybrid plan, thinks it will pay off from the long run and it'll be there faster. It's a difference of opinion, and they both have people on both sides with numbers, some of their own fiscal agencies will say, you've just extended this longer, you've got some big money because you have to then pay up the system, if you will, so it's solving because now you've got no one else coming in the pension system to support those that are in the pension system. So they debated about what's the right thing to do. Appears they're heading towards a compromise, maybe one that encourages more people to go to the 401K retirement and less the pension, but the pension would still be there. But that part's not been determined, nor in some ways does that affect us. Would affect us because they held up the budget. But they also sat down at the same time and started to head towards, you know, some kind of, I don't want to call it compromise, but agreement on where we should be with the budget. So the main difference, if you remember back when I did this in April, was basically, are we going to get 50, 2X formula, 50 and 100 for districts? Was it going to be 100 for everybody, which was the house version? And then there was the senate version, which was like $88 and $166, and they were going to take some of the retirement funds that they give the district away, which wouldn't have been good for us. And the other question was, how much of the 31A at-risk money would we get? Okay, so those are the parts there. So it's not finalized, but we do have some agreement. So when you look at the budget and you look at the revenue side, I'll start there, here are the assumptions that we did in putting together the budget. It seems clear to us that the 2X formula is going to be in there, and it appears that it'll be $60 per student. Okay? That brings us up to the foundational, if you will, of $8,411 because the other thing they did is it appears they're going to leave in, you have to remember, a year ago, they had to put a little extra money in a lot of the hold harmless districts because inflation, we weren't going to get any kind of an increase a year ago. And so they put in an extra $50, I think it was $51, each of those districts. They left that in the foundation. That's a good thing because they could have pulled that back out, given a 60, taken away 51, and it wouldn't be very far ahead. Right now, it looks like they're going to be there. The latest projections for 31A money is about $525,000 that we're getting. Now, you're not going to see it in your original budget because this is an expenses have to equal revenue. And to put it in this, right now, I'd be putting in a line of revenue for it, and I'd just be putting in an expense line that really didn't mean anything to you. The expenses, and Brian will work on that, Mike will work on that, I guess we all will. There are some things that could help us on the general fund side, I'm not going to say a fortune, but there are also some things that'll help us meet some of the requirements coming, like in literacy, with literacy coaches. So there's some things that we won't have to spend general fund money on. But we'll bring that at adjustment time. We'll keep you informed as we go. But it really didn't make any sense to put that in there now when we don't know how it's going to be spent. And to be honest, you know, that's one thing that can be fluid enough that it can change enough. And as you remember, it ranged from 1.7 million, I think, on the proposals to 100,000. So somewhere in between, but I don't think we should put that in the budget to worry about it just at this point in time because, again, equal expenses to the revenue that go together. Can carry some money over, so don't worry if we don't get it, the state delays on us a little bit, we'll still have that money, it's just when we can use that. And the other thing that they're all pretty clear on is we're going to maintain the MIPSers cost offsets. They're not going to take anything out of that, it appears to be there. And I don't know, I know I've explained it numerous times, but just again, the retirement system is being supported with state payment that comes to us, and then we turn around and give it right back to them. And it does two things. It puts a cap on top of it, and then they're kind of paying down a little bit of the difference. So the 147A pays down some of it, 147C puts a cap on it. I think the 147C is usually not touchable, they kind of know they're going to keep doing that, but the 147A, it's always like that low carrot, it will go. If we don't fund that, that's always going to mean more dollars out of the district pockets someplace. So it's important. So we're capped right now, I think it's 25, it's coming here, 25.96 is the highest we would pay for anybody. Without it, you'd be in the 37, 38, depending on who would win and which part they are. There's seven or eight different ways we would be doing it. Some of the assumptions for MPS then. We're projecting from our consultants and everything that we know, enrollment drop, about 63 students. It's a good thing, if I'm wrong on that, to the high side, in other words, it wouldn't hurt your feelings if I come back next year and said we have the same number of students in the district. It's a very good thing. It is one of the fastest ways to turn our district around financially, no questions. We're talking about a blended count of 76.29. We do know, and I just listed a few of the grants that are coming out of there, so you know why the revenue's dropping just a little bit. The number of students will be the biggest factor on it. Reductions in federal programs, 25,000, as you've heard, the title funds and what's going on with the federal government, those are fluctuating, and it looks like the state's saying we're going to get less of both, and the initial allows to show that. You'll also see a reduction on the expense side, too, because we don't take in any federal dollars, it doesn't go out on the other side. We're always too, with ESA and special education, how much it's costing, it's varying, and this coming year, it looks like we would receive about $161,000 less than we had in the past. But the TRIG technology grants are the ones that have been there, especially the state turned over to statewide testing on computers. There was quite a bit of money out there, and it's going away now, so we spent the last of it. It's helped tremendously this time. One of the ways we are getting more money through the ESA is the IDA flow-through money. We, for a long time, have provided parochial services. It's not the same as what we provided if it came to MPS, but we will mainly in their speech, but it can be any special education services. We provide those services because those parochial schools are in our school district. We're kind of got looking here, not myself, Lori Holderby's here, too, where I forget to. A lot of people going to make a budget, not me just sitting there and doing that. Lori does all the labor, the business people, and everybody that we have to go to get budget numbers from. It's kind of important that they all pulled together here. But Lori and I started looking at this going, we think we should be getting some money from ESA, we're not sure why we're doing this, and either why they're not doing it or why we're not getting any money for it. Not a fry in that way. So we've been working with them, and they are flowing through money. It's federal money, it's meant to serve the parochials, it's a portion and share question that they're getting an equal amount, and so we're just going to finally get paid for those services. It doesn't reimburse the strength. That's not what we're asking for, there was a portion and share that should come through. Looks like going forward, we'll retain that just because we have the capacity, and we approached ESA about them taking it over. There are little parts that they would have a hard time filling, and so we think it might be best for us to keep managing like we have, just have them flow the money through to us. So the income, we'll never fully cover everything you do, but it's better than we've been for a while. So I wanted to show you the enrollment because you often want to see the trends, because when we talk about it, it's such a big factor in what we do. And so as you look at this one, this just kind of shows you the breakdown, 1516 through 1718 estimates. And the other thing I'd point out to you, we typically, I typically leave 89 up there because that's the last year of 20J money, so we had quite a few students, we were getting 290-some dollars more per student each time. That was the kind of the heyday of times, and when it went away, it kind of gives you where to compare to. But just so you know, you can see how the elementary versus secondary versus special ed breakdown goes, and of course, don't forget, we get total numbers, but then it has to be blended over time. Remember, they measure 10% from the February before and 90%. You get partials, and there's a whole bunch that goes into the county if you pull around here. But just so you can see, it's kind of interesting, the elementary appears to have stabilized or if not grown a little bit. That can be part of stuff we're doing behind et cetera and programming. And as we knew, that bubble of birth has to kind of go down at the secondary level, and you're just seeing it. It's not dramatic because we get feed-ins from other programs, parochial, for example, that end in anterdate, so we're just getting some of those consequences, just to give you an idea. If you really want to see a trend line, I think that's the one that showed, and I think I put that in the board pack as, too, but it's really been over that last little bit there, as you look at it, that we've, I think 1314 was, I'm scared Mike is leaving, because that was when, that's that last line that kind of went way down. We lost like 150 more students, I think, than Lynn had projected at the time, and since that time, it's flattened itself out considerably, and that's made a difference in where we stand now. You could put a birth rate in Midland County on there, and it would match, you know, pretty perfectly the same shape for around Antwerp. It's just there's less kids out there, and there's more competition for those kids, but there's just less to grant. That's the one thing, when we've worked with a consultant, feels that we're just grabbing, if you take the birth rate, just what percent are you getting in kindergarten? It's gone up now. I'm not telling you it's like 10% up, it's more like 3, 4% up from where we were. It might have been down around 59, it's a 62. It's a good thing, but it's just. This is how the per pupil foundational allowance goes. I would just tell you, it will fluctuate depending on how much the local brings in. You see that 41531 from the hold harmless, can't change that. This is all per pupil, by the way. The local millage will depend on the taxable value of the non-homeside. Okay? So if it goes up and you see the percentage go up, then the state aid payment's going to go down because there's only so much to get there. That's why we always tell people, too, if the hold harmless millage were ever voted down, that's our problem, the state doesn't make that up. That's the one thing that is above and beyond. So they would match the other ones, and it just varies over time. In fact, you can see there back in 89 that that 20J payment, that Governor Graham only taken away was $293 a student. If you get some idea of where we're going. So general fund, we're looking at 79,000, 79 million. And it's 79,128,914. You get the chance to see where those funds are coming from, pretty consistent with budgets you've seen in the past as for where the breakdown is coming from, state versus local, et cetera. And I guess the only other thing I would say there is that it's down about 900,000, roughly 950, from where it was this year, from the March budget adjustment, which was the last time that we gave you a budget. So that's where we stand right there. Okay, the expenditure side. We keep using our balance of our budget. It seems to be working. It's the process of maintaining building and department expenditures close to the level they were at for 1617, actually close to the level they were at 1516, actually close to the level they were at 1450. Since we've started this, it's more of a process. It's just our terminology for process of, you come in and tell us, not what you had last year, but what do you need and what do you need for this year? You know, it doesn't make us the favorite people at that time of year, but it is a good question, and it has helped us maintain the supply side of our budget. We are ending some of our employee concessions for the past two years. You remember, people that have been on the board for a while, we did ask for concessionary packages from all our employee groups, and that's coming to an end. So we do have some payments, one-time budget surplus protection stipends. We've got states, steps have been reinstated, and whenever the steps come back in, it's the fault of anybody, there's just a lot of people there waiting to stop, and so that makes a difference in how much money we have going out at that point in time. As you know, as part of this, I'm pretty pleased with the fact that we actually have every employee group settled, and we've had it done way early this time. We did approximately 1% salary increase for employees. It kind of went along with the reduced budget surplus protection stipend, that was part of the deal. We do have an increase in medical premiums of 8%. Remember, we lost some of the runoff costs to this, so it's kind of a little bit of a trade-off. We are decreasing that this year, but it will happen in January, the district's funding of the health savings accounts. You know, we raised the individual's contribution to their health savings account. In other words, the Dr. Bowles are like 100, 200 less than we funded a year ago. We know we have to go there because no matter what you do, if the health keeps increasing, we have to find ways to keep under, for our employees' sake, too, the hard cap, because the state does limit how high we can spend, so it's important we find affordable health plans that are good for our employees but don't violate it, because once you go over, you're on the hook for the full amount of whatever you go over, so it's important we find plans to work. There's a reduction in that federal program, matches the revenues, and on staffing patterns, it's kind of a process. I couldn't explain it to you totally at times, but we're always looking and evaluating positions, and it can be the time of year, it can be that year, it can be at the end of a year, where we sit there and say, okay, what did we just do? Is that good, bad, indifferent? So we always try to analyze, I guess is the best way I can say, sometimes it doesn't mean a reduction is set down, sometimes it doesn't mean addition is down. Absolutely true, it's kind of both. Just looking at it from the standpoint of, let's analyze it, let's see what makes sense, let's see what's good for our kids, and we kind of work from there. But it does make a difference in the future. These are the proposed expenditure changes. These are the major categories that you would get there, so it shouldn't be a surprise. The salaries category, and again, the first column there is the March, so that was the March budget adjustment that you approved. It's the latest 1617 budget I have. And then there's the one we're going to propose for 1718, and red at the top, second column over. And what you see there is salaries are up about 600,000. You put the 1% in there, some of the other things we did, that's kind of where it expected. You might wonder why the benefits are down, just shy of a million, if you remember, and that benefits category would be the early retirement incentive, which was in our budget this year, about 900,000. So that's what happened. The benefits really just kind of remained stable, but when that comes out of it, there's going to be a drop in that part of it. Purchase services and contracted services, about the same. You know, those are anything that we purchased from somebody that's not on our payroll, so picture everything we have to hire out to do. Contractor services a little more, and the repair and maintenance side, but they're all the same general category. I would guess the majority of those, too, are due to viral claim the contractor's up a little bit. Wouldn't be all of it, it could be everything from, we might, and I know we did, we chopped down more trees because of the ash, or that all of a sudden, we were doing quite a few there to be saved, so that was there. Supplies and materials, remember what I said, it's pretty much staying the same down a little bit there. Could be various reasons there. I think on the capital outlay, a little bit of seeing the bonds effect there, there's less to take out of the general fund, not that we still don't, because, for example, this summer, you know, we're doing, for example, bathrooms, and so it had to come from someplace, and so that would be out of our capital fund, but you're starting to see some of the bond effect of, there's another source to take care of some of those capital lines. Leases, kind of an impressive amount, but that's the copier lease. So the copier lease finally goes away, we're going to buy them through the bond now, because that takes, that lease was there every year over and over again. That really helps offset some of the increases that we had for the year. And the transfers, again, are just various things with the money's going out of this system. So again, you'll see that our expenditures are down about 776,000. So the general fund, again, this is by account at 78 million. Like I said, down about 776,000. You can see where everything goes, I think the key thing, and this doesn't change much. We're a personnel-heavy field business, and you'll see, if you look at it pretty closely, somewhere between 85 and 86% of our expenditures are typically on personnel of some kind. You'll see the other there, the 14.5, that hasn't changed much. Maybe a little higher when you have a little older staff, sometimes more experienced staff, but it sticks right around there, so it's pretty close to being the same old. Another way to look at that exact same thing, so I try to give you a couple, this one's by function. Sometimes, I know you guys are interested in just a different look to say, okay, so where's, where's the money going? So you can look up here and see, okay, 65%, just classroom instruction, student support, instructional support. You can see the other, or the administration, how much it is. Support services tend to be like the financial business office type people, those things. So you can see where they go, maintenance, transportation, athletics, but just a different look at where the expenditures go when you see the list of expenditures. And one of the things you got in the board packet was kind of like a chart, if you will, that kind of showed you the different categories and the different functions, so you could see where a different amount of money's going. But it's just two ways to look at it. And then, of course, you're always interested in the bottom line, so when we propose the budget, where are we going? Again, that's, in the first column, that's the March budget, so what you're looking at is that 1617 adjusted budget, not our final one, so whenever we start talking fund balance, I got a question. I don't know the exact fund balance until I see that last audited number, so we know exactly what it is. So this is a guess where you think it will be. But when you look at this then, you'll see where the revenues were at the different times, and now again, if you look at it, you can see the two numbers I talked about on the revenues and expenditures. In both cases, we expect, and I know it had been a while last year, you hadn't seen it for a while, but we expect excesses revenues. In other words, we certainly are staying within what we're taking in within that year and not having to touch fund balance. There is a category called budget variance that can either go up or down, and it could be either like an increase in revenue or a decrease in expenditures or increase in expenditures. I mean, there's, variance takes all of it. 1%. I think I've told you many times, historically, it runs 2% to 3%. It's more closer to 2% in the last few years as money's gotten tighter, but we budget one to be conservative. I don't want anyone thinking, I'm not trying to, when it's there at the end, we'll show it to you, but this is what we try to budget for. So you can see the surplus, if you will, and the money that we'll be able to put into fund balance is about 1.6, 1.7 million there. So again, you've got excess revenue, you'll have some variance that'll go in. What I put there is the unrestricted fund balance. There's fund balance. That's everything that's above and beyond, right? Within fund balance, there is what we call inventory and prepaid items. Money's gone, you can't spend it, but it's part of fund balance. So if someone gives you just the fund balance number, that's in there. The other thing that's in there is anything that was, I'll call it gifts or restricted money. Restricted money has a purpose, you can only use it for that purpose. So what I tried to show you this time was the unrestricted. Sometimes when you look at the budget document, you also see spendable. It's another term you see, spendable fund balance. Well, the spendable includes all the gift money, because you can spend it, just can't spend it on anything you want to. So just throwing that out there. The unrestricted wise, looks, if our projections come in, somewhere around 11.8, 11.9 million. And you can see, because the curious part is always the percent of expenditures. Now, as we do that, and it's always debatable, and we always talk to people about how much should you have in your, your fund balance? And it's always, you know, it depends who you are, what you think's the right number. Almost every one of our employee groups, I can't think of one that hasn't, have all agreed to look at next year, not actually the year after, 1819. Any kind of raise is going to be based on how much we have in fund balance. So I think Mike has presented to those groups and myself, when we've talked to them, that we would like a fund balance somewhere between this 13 and 15 or 16, and you know, when people ask me, do you really need that? I would just always tell people that, when you look at it, and maybe I could show you by jump, but trend there. If you look at this, just so you can see a trend and the reason it's important, you know, if you look there, there's a lot of years that little blue line is not as high as the orange one, except for the last three. All those times you were, and it's okay, that's why you put together a fund balance so that you can allocate when you need to, but that's what got you through.[1641.41] So before my time in this position, you used that funds balance to make it through. I don't know if there's a magic number either, and if you go around, it's around the state, it's different in every community. I'm just telling you that that, that got you through, as you look at it, there's a good five years up there where you had to use it. There's a couple of years, like ten, eleven, you might say, oh, we were okay then, that was a big influx, one-time payment kind of thing. Yeah, we made it, but didn't know we were going to. And even as late as fifteen, sixteen, excuse me, fourteen, fifteen, was the first time, we thought we were going to dip in further than we did. And in fifteen, sixteen, we ended up being to the good, but much bigger to the good than we thought. So I just wanted to show you that. Another way you might look at it is, is kind of over trends. And so I would just say, as you look at that, again, you'll see that we were really taking her down pretty low there, and percentage-wise, we're working our way up. That's true fund balance there, that's not unrestricted one, so both graphs are just showing you how much we have in fund balance. So as you look at that, what I would just tell you is it's, it's been a savior as we've looked at things, and it's helped us make it through to that point. And so as you look ahead, I'm not going to tell you you're never going to dip into that because you're not going to build that to fifty percent, say, oh, this is great. But you gotta have some, some money there for lots of different reasons. And so I look at the budget and see that we're still making good progress. We've had, I said it earlier, not just the people that put together the budget, but our employees through this time, that worked really hard and helped us by the concessions they've made, hard work they do. It's not just the process, but it's, it's getting there. So I always look at that as kind of a total team effort. So that's the budget. I certainly would answer any questions for you. You know, you have to follow with the public hearing and the budget.
All right. So at this time, we'll move into item three point four, which is a public hearing of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen general operating budget. So do I have questions or comments?
I guess one thing, Bob, you talked about the taxes and we're at two point seven two. Now, that's split, right, for summer taxes for the city folks?
Yes, so we do one point. If, in the city of, that would be split. The county only assesses once in the winter, so that doesn't get split. So yeah, so it'd be one point, in fact, summer tax resolution coming up here, we'll say one point three six, we'll split that. Old harmless gets split, too, but we try not to do that equally because it's like playing with fire that, so we typically take like point nine and then we follow up with whatever remain is. It's too tough to predict because sometimes if I can get a better read, like we suddenly know we got more students in August before September, I can adjust a little bit more, maybe a little closer, but we've been pretty accurate here.
Okay. And then with the thirty-one A, that if we do get the five hundred and twenty-five thousand, then we'll probably see changes in the school improvement plan and different things we'll be able to invest differently?
Yeah, and I would caution you, too far on that, you know, Brian and I will differ just a little here. And so I'm a little more cautious in service. Brian's very excited about that money, where he can close the achievement gap and some of the things he can do there. And I'm still not sold that Bob's correct on the five hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's why he put, did not put a figure in there.
Right, right.
I think there's some, still some things going on in Lansing that makes me very cautious of that. And so I hear the other way. I also know that there's many new things tie barred to that language. So at one time, at-risk money, when I was the previous district, was pretty much, I could use it wherever I chose. That's not the case. If you look how the new language, it's tied to the third grade reading legislation, to the math legislation, and some improvement goals, some restrictions. And so I think some of the things that Brian and the principals have talked about may not meet these guidelines, but we'll wait and see where the proof is putting is once it's officially approved. That part, Brian would agree on.
Well, I'm excited that there's a chance that we'll get that money, and I think it'll, it'll make a huge difference for our administration.
And then to go back a little bit, just about that, at-risk funds. So that payment I talked about earlier to the Equity Caucus, they have worked very hard on that. But also, since I've been here, I've raised probably a little bit of came with our two local representatives about at-risk kids and at-risk kids. And I give Gary Glenn credit, he has gone into Lansing and been our advocate on that, that, you know, middle book schools, they have less at-risk kids, but they still have at-risk kids, and that money should follow at risk. And so they, the present language only allows us to capture a portion of that. Bob knows his numbers better than me. So a typical district that's not one of the thirty-two districts will get a five hundred?
Seven hundred.
And we, and we are under the new language, so we got our foot in, but under the new language, we would get thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Thirty percent, only thirty percent. So we get thirty cents on a dollar compared to every other district that's a dollar. So we're making progress.
But we've got, we've got ways to go. I guess the other thing that I noticed was with the IDEA flow-through services through the ESA and the sixty-six thousand dollars that we're getting this year and haven't gotten from years. So Lori, a big thank you for, for helping us uncover that. And it's, I would love to have the definition of flow-through when for twenty years, we haven't seen the flow-through. So I'm glad to see that sixty-six thousand coming through.
Yeah, in all honesty, portion shares we got into, and Lori would agree, it's, you have federal regulations and you have state regulations. And in some cases, it's not clear which one. So I think part of it was this conflict of the two areas and nobody really knowing who in history wants it. It starts with who even is the local education agency? In some cases, the state, the ISD can act, in other cases, it's us all the way. So I think that's where some of that difficulty came from.
But I will give Lori, Lori, Bob, Mary Lawrence, a ton of credit on that one, that they dug deep and they went to MDA and got a definition of that LEA, which hence may give us the ability to go to the ESA and say, it is not right. And that is sixty-six thousand multiplied by many years potentially, so that's a big, big time.
Absolutely. I was excited, of course, with the employee groups all settling and then the one percent raises. And then I sure hope we can, we can hit the fifteen percent fund, general fund balance because that would even, that'd be a one percent raise for next year, and that would be great for the employee groups as well.
Their, their comments.
I, I just want to say thank you to Lori and Bob and anybody else who was involved, the graphs, the charts. It made it understandable to me for my first time through, so I appreciate that.
And I would like to comment that after the years, it's so nice to see the fund balance increasing after so many years of watching it decrease, and we needed to use it for very important reasons. But it's just kind of refreshing to see that. I think it's time and, and that our budget is looking good.
Healthy.
And healthy, yep, so that we can share that hopefully with, with our employees. So thank you for all your hard work, everyone. Anyone else?
I guess I feel it's just physically responsible when you have fifteen percent fund balance to be able to give raises and talk about raises. But when, when you don't have that healthy fund balance, it, it makes it real hard, a hard sell and you put your district at risk. So I'm just pleased with that, that budget.
Brett, did you have something?
Yeah, I was just curious. I was waiting.
Yes.
All the tables are great. I just, on appendix D, we have the ratio of students per certified staff and students per teacher, and then we have students per administrator, and there was some moves in the students per administrator. And I was just curious if there's a target that we were going after to, that is a rule of thumb that we should be in.
No, I think the reason you see that, of course, in a graph guy, I know it's the right way. One of the things is we took the administrators pretty low, so it's kind of a false, if you will, the number, so the graph jumped up, the number of students per administrator jumped definitely, we took the number of administrators, so kind of when we talked about adjusting staffing, at the end of the year, you know, it's like when you get one of those moments, you go, I think we pushed that one a little too far. And that was, actually, people in the building, too. So you're getting feedback going, oh, you cut that tight enough, it made this harder. And so it's really been us getting back to where I want to tell you.
Bob's being politically correct, Brett. By nature, I'm very aggressive, and I came in and I did, that first two months on the job where Linda walked in and said we were eighty students missing, and I had to find eight hundred thousand, we're already at declining budget. Bob's not kidding, I wondered what I had done. And so I, that next year, I went extremely aggressive. And Mary was still off in high school, she knows what I did with high schools and what I did to places. And as that budget began to recover, I self-reflected and say, where can we do that? And we added some back, but we didn't add it the same. And so I, you know, I feel like we're a changing organization, and so those want, we look like exactly what we once were, we're not going to look exactly what we once were, we're a different population, a different organization. And so we went to the principals to say, we, we're going to give some FTE back, decide how you're going to use that FTE, but it's not going to be exactly the same. Then central office, you know, I, many US board members tried to talk me out of it. We didn't feel Gary Berlin's position. And I certainly, and I'll give credit to Brian and Bob, and this is because I was supposed to be equally sharing in the extra dues and pains, but they're very good at protecting me, and they took the bulk of that work on. And, you know, when I see my two colleagues here at six in the morning and seven at night and, and what we're doing, and we're too thin, and so again, as we recover, it's a chance to reflect and move back. The teacher ratio, the student, is, I'm not going to say this one nicely. I honestly believe there was times that, I'll say it this way. So when I lived poor as a young man, I knew I didn't waste money. Today that I make a little more, I probably at times waste some money because I have it. Our district at times had the luxury of spending money, it's more than money than they should have probably had. So I watch staffing closer than probably anybody has had, and sometimes that comfortable for people, but we run staffing tighter and closer. But again, when you look at our class size numbers, they're not accessible, really even maybe increased across the board, but we no longer have a, we used to see often in our, in our classes, particularly secondary level, where maybe we ran a fifteen student section and then we ran a thirty-two. Where now it's more, we're moving to that twenty to, you know, maybe thirty range. And so the, the average is still the same, but we've increased the bottom if that makes sense. And so we're just tightening the organization, so yeah, you're seeing that in that graph. I think multiple, like most things, Brad, multiple reasons?
Yeah, there's not a lot of fluctuation in the students per.
Yeah.
That one's consistent all the way back to two thousand and three.
Yes, and we've kept it down there, yeah.
If you look back to two thousand and three, that's the point in the days we had sixty administrators. Slap us all a little, right here, that, half that.
Yeah, that table's pretty empty over there. So.
I just had one more.
I was going to say, that's, yep, go ahead.
So is this reflective of what we did twenty minutes ago? We hired another administrator, is that in?
Is it in?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, because this is the budget moving forward. So this is next year's budget.
So like all the budgets that we do, not, again, not knowing exactly where things will end up, we have, that's some assumptions. So assumption is, okay, this administrative bonus could happen, so we put it in the budget. Just like anything else, we get down the road and something doesn't happen, that's why we have adjustments to reflect what we're doing. So it's, it's in there. We tried to have a contingency, it's interesting, I think the last, the, you told me twenty new hires? Does that sound right, Mike?
Yeah.
And so we got to project their salaries. We tend to be conservative, meaning we put a lot of them, you know, we know we're going to get one ones, as they call them, category one step ones. But there are categories, you're not going to find anybody in that. So we try to, on the side of the higher salaries, so it's built in there, so you don't have to worry about, oh, boy, we had to get this person, is that going to happen? Same with the benefits side? Does that make sense to you? Put them in like full family, just because, you know, they come in as a single and many one ones will, that's okay.
We are high, but it's close. We are high. You've seen enough of these budgets. We are high on an adopted budget. Don't ever want to come to you and say we built the budget too small.[1652.53]